Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Gendal.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby. Mayor Per temporary Daley.
Present.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. So if you'll join me, please. Please bow your heads. Dear Father in heaven, please guide us tonight as we debate important issues for our community. Thank you so much for your care and guidance that you have given us and uh to our fifty some plus years in this community. Thank you. And um help us as we move forward. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir, but I would like to give a little update and comment. As you probably are aware that Barbara is retiring next month.
We haven't figured out how to stop that yet, right?
And and uh we have her replacement that sit behind her right there, uh Lynette. Our uh Ariola, Ariola. So Lynette have been with the city twenty seven years. That uh started out with the planning department and the last twenty years she has been helping me running public works and the uh city manager department. So has she has been promoted to to the city clerk for station starting next month, so.
Congratulations.
I would have thought you would have applied for that job. I mean, that's most important job in the city, right?
No, sir, she's my boss.
Well, all the more reason.
Thank you. Congratulations, Lynette. Welcome. All these short timers job you hire.
If I can make a comment. Barbara, I've you've been here longer than I have and I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you. Even when I don't get my paperwork turned in on time, you're very gentle but persuasive and persistent to get me motivated to do it. So um any any you're just a fun person to work with, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate the kind words.
Okay, moving on, uh, we would like to invite the public. Anyone who would like to speak on a non-agendized item is welcome to come forward. I know we have two speakers for an agenda item number two, but I don't see any notes for anybody on anything non-agendized going once. Mr. Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Council. Uh, I, yeah, as you know, I grew up in this area before Loma Linda was Loma Linda. And I've never really seen anything involving the veterans. And I'd like to propose that maybe Loma Linda could honor the veterans in some way. I don't know, some kind of proclamation or a banner or something like that. I know it does have that, but that's all I've seen, sir.
We we traditionally would have a parade, a veterans parade from the from the VA. Uh, but I know because of COVID, that's been canceled the last two years.
Yes, yes, and and the VA does that and our we have a veteran staff that attend the parade every year.
Okay.
So.
In the Redlands Parade?
Yes.
No, 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 Loma Linda.
Before it was me, VA used to do that.
The VA Parade. If uh if I can, uh, I'm in charge of the Veterans Dinner at the Elks Club uh this year. It's two to seven on eleven eleven Veterans Day right after the parade. If any of you are veterans, uh, I invite you to come and enjoy what we're what we're gonna have, free dinner, uh, dancing and different things, so. Like you to make it if you can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's a great idea and if uh maybe we'll we'll talk later. Maybe there's something more we can do.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number one for our scheduled items, we have a couple of proclamations. Uh, the first one is for Family Court Awareness Month. And I'm not sure, are you Jen or Tina?
I'm Jen.
Okay, Jen. Um, you're welcome to come up to the podium if you'd like.
Hi.
Hi.
As I said, my name is Jen and I'm very honored to be here tonight. Thank you all. Uh, I'm a protective mom of a thirteen-year-old daughter. I'm a certified divorce coach and I'm a dental hygienist. I have lived in Loma Linda for almost thirty years, so this is definitely my home. But I wanted to thank you so much for making this proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month. In this community, since it's a medical one that's built on making man whole, this is such an important message to get out to all parents. It's the unfortunate truth that the family court system is broken. If you enter into it in a divorce situation and there's any type of domestic violence in this in your case and you're a protective parent seeking to protect your child, the abusive parent will weaponize the family court system against you. Domestic violence is characterized by power and control and abusive people use that to maintain the control at all costs. The rights of parents are considered more important than the rights of children. The result is that children are placed in homes that are full of chaos and a lot of adverse childhood experiences. It's also true that most lawyers, judges, and even therapists are unaware of what happens in family court. So there's three words that mean a lot to me that I keep at the forefront for myself and as I joined this fight. And that is the words hope, awareness, and action. Thank you for being part of that for us. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And on behalf of the city council, we have a proclamation here. Um, I'll just start out. I'm not sure I'll be able to read all of it, but we'll start out. Whereas the mission at One Moms Battle, OMB, and the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, FCAMC, is to increase awareness on the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. And whereas the mission at the FCAMC is to increase awareness on the importance of education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, and post-separation abuse for all professionals working within the family court system. Excuse me. Um, there's a couple of more whereas's, but um therefore, um, on the behalf of the city council, we do hereby proclaim the month of November twenty twenty-one as Family Court Awareness Month uh in Loma Linda and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children.
Thank you.
So congratulations. If you want to come up here, let me sign it real quick. Absolutely. You want to bring all the council?
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you again. We really appreciate you and and others making us aware of of various opportunities to do these. This is really important to us, so we thank you for that. The next proclamation, uh, this will be, I think, the third or fourth year we've done this one, is uh for National Nurse Practitioner Week, November seven to thirteen. And is there anybody here? Allison? Ah, Allison, come on forward if you'd like to make a few comments.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor and Council of Loma Linda. My name is Allison Brooks. I am a nurse practitioner. I currently work at Loma Linda University. I've been there for five years and I work in cardiothoracic surgery. And I have been a nurse practitioner for twelve years now. And a nurse, and I graduated from Loma Linda back in nineteen ninety-one, which is like five years ago, right? So anyways, um, this is National Nurse Practitioner Week and I'm didn't come with a prepared speech, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew what a nurse practitioner was and does. Uh, we are advanced practice nurses, uh, registered nurses. We have masters and often doctorate degrees. And we work in wide variety of specialties, whether it's in internal medicine, critical care. We work rural, um, surgical, jail, everywhere. Nurse practitioners, we work along with physicians. We collaborate. Um, and we work together to come up with a treatment plan for patients and their loved ones to make sure that that they um heal or um have a great um plan for their um for their disease process. Um, I am very um, I'm proud to be a nurse practitioner and um and I'm proud to work at Loma Linda. I don't know if, I'm sure a lot of you guys probably know my boss. His name is Dr. Razuk and he is an amazing, amazing physician. And he's also a great mentor and he's been very helpful for us in our in our um at our job at Loma Linda. And I wish he would be able to be here tonight, but he had a emergency case and so he wasn't able to be here. But again, nurse practitioners, um, we are very valued and again, I'm just very grateful that you're here, that you're able to give us a proclamation for this week. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, there are lots of whereas's and such on this one, um, but needless to say, uh, we on behalf of the city council, we urge our residents of this community to recognize the countless contributions nurse practitioners have made over the past half-century and will continue to make on behalf of the health and well-being of citizens in our city and our state. So. Uh, would you like a photo with us too?
I would love to. Thank you.
Of course, there you go. We're all a, we're all a team here.
I know. I'm just, I wish I had my niece with me. She's very good about doing that.
He's a professional. One, this way? One more again. Thank you. You too. Oh. Okay, that is probably um one of the best things I think we get to do as a council, uh, recognize people in our community. So moving on to item number two, we have a public hearing um on a parcel map application uh for the Groves, uh, which is our our project, uh, the northeast part of the community. So we could get a presentation on that and then we'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Duper, councilmen, members of the public. My name is Lorena Materita. I am the planner for the city of Loma Linda. And tonight I have one public hearing item presentation. And again, that is for a tentative parcel map application as the mayor just said. So just just to give you a recap of what is a parcel map, for those that do not know, it is a subdivision of four or fewer parcels that are created simultaneously. So basically, you create a new map and it only involves four or fewer. So the tentative map, the city can ensure that such things such as street alignments, drainage, easements, lot dimensions, and rights of way conform to city regulations. The map is evaluated for its consistency with the general plan, zoning, and the compatibility of the plan and public improvements with surrounding development. Tonight, city council is being asked to review the maps to ensure the proposed project is consistent with the city's adopted plans and land use goals. Upon council's action tonight, the applicant will then submit a final map, which will come before you once again. And then finally, with the final map, we'll send it to the county for recordation. The applicant is High Point Communities. They've come before you several times now with multiple projects. They are here again and they are proposing the map, map two zero three eight nine, to subdivide seventy-six point one acres and create four conveyable parcels within the area we call the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan. And within that specific plan, we have four planning areas, three, 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 four, three, five, and three, six. The project will vacate the paper street known as Hampton Drive. As you see in the image to the right, uh, Hampton Drive and that weird S-shaped street. Those are what we call paper streets. They're not real streets. They're only streets on paper because a long time ago there was a map in place that was recorded where we assumed they'd be streets. So they're paper streets. So we're gonna vacate them and then we're gonna correct boundaries and easements to prepare for individual internal subdivisions of each planning areas. So those planning areas that I just mentioned, the three, three through three, six, we are preparing for internal subdivisions. On October sixth of last month, we took this tentative parcel map application to city coun- or to Planning Commission and they did review it and recommend approval. To give you an idea of the existing setting, again, this is in the area we now call the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan area, the phase three concept area. So these seventy-six point one acres currently vacant are south of Redlands Boulevard, north of Mission Road, west of California Street, and west of the Lennar Tract. And intersected by Park Avenue and Bryn Mawr. Surrounding uses include the Ambulatory Care Center. Again, like I said, Lennar Tract, residential to the south. It's currently zone planned community. The general plan land use designation is Special Planning Area D. And within Special Planning Area D is also the Historic Mission Overlay District. The designated uses for the site within this specific plan for those specific planning areas are mixed use, medium density, park, and high density. So those specific uses that I just mentioned will eventually come in this, what I like to call a super pad parcel map. Those are the uses we are gonna see in these seventy-one point six acres of land.
And May, can you go back to the previous slide, please? Thank you. Uh, because I read the staff report and I was struggling to be sure I understood this. The brown area on the left side, which would be the west side, is that for the school district? Okay, and they're still retaining that because I thought I'd heard at one point they were thinking that maybe this wasn't gonna be. They're still thinking about it. Okay. And and so when you talk about um uh, it doesn't, I don't have it here, but the various areas is that, can you point out specifically three dash three is in the top?
Yes, and in the next slide, it'll kind of be a little clearer.
Okay, thank you.
So on this slide, we see the tentative parcel map to the left and the.
Can you speak into the microphone so we can hear you?
So on on this side, we're gonna see the tentative parcel map on the left with the specific planning areas like three, three, the one that you just asked about. And to the right is is the land use map that we see in the specific plan itself. So three, three is designated for a future mixed-use project. Three, four has actually.
Define mixed mixed use.
Commercial and and residential.
That's what I thought.
So what we're looking at tonight is a parcel map. Remember, it's a subdivision. We're not actually looking at development or projects tonight. We're just cleaning up the existing map and creating this new map. So this is the new proposed map where we vacate the streets. We fit, we align the roads correctly. We're um basically creating the parcels to match with the planning areas as we intended through the specific plan. Any questions on this slide?
Yeah.
I wanted to understand um I what we're exactly voting on. So I get the sequel part. Are we today confirming uh which areas are gonna be low residential?
No, this this is a parcel map, but we're confirming today is allowing them to create these conveyable parcels. They are existing already, but they're cleaning it up. They're cleaning it up to allow for future projects that are gonna go. So right here where it says very low density, that has already been approved for very low density.
This was all entitled when we sold the property a year ago. So this is all already all been determined.
Yes.
So so what's happened is is there were essentially all kinds of parcels in this property before, were streets that had never been built. And we, in the planning process, in the entitlement process that you approved, created nice square blocks of land that did not match the underlying property lines beneath that. And all we're doing now is bringing the property lines into alignment with the planning areas so that everything makes a logical fit. So we don't have property lines running across different pieces, so we're not, you know, putting parks, parks with three different.
So where are those adjustments in the map up here?
So on the the left-hand side, you can see the underlayment. There's kind of that S-street that goes through there and those kind of weird parcels. Those go away. And then that real block square, three, 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 five, that's the new lines that you're creating over the top of them.
Okay. And it's important to to kind of recap that this is our master plan that we've been working on for the last five or six years and this will mirror the other half that's already been developed. That was the intent.
Yeah, correct. That this is this is the last half of the 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 specific plan.
So with with the grading plan, we get a little closer look of the improvements they plan to make. Again, this is this is out there, but what you don't see are future sidewalks. You don't see the dimensions of the street or these street sections that they're now providing to show us that they are going to comply, that they are going to follow our street guidelines, our ordinances. And one thing on this grading plan too, uh, if if you remember the specific plan, we talked about a regional drainage basin. So we're indicating it now on this super pad. So the intent for these, most of these areas in these developments is for the water to eventually drain in that drainage basin that we discussed during the park approval of three, four. In terms of the environmental review, just like we sort of mentioned already, the environmental impact report did uh get adopted by this council and Planning Commission in two thousand and eighteen. So we already planned for this. We already planned for these future uses. Uh, everything wasn't was considered at the time and we did adequately analyze the project site and use. And all of that will continue to apply. The EIR will continue to the comply as these projects come forer- forward. Moreover, there is no development proposed with this specific application tonight. So therefore, environmental review is not applicable at this time. As with all projects, public hearing notices were mailed out to the surrounding property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. Per the Brown Act, we also posted three public locations, City Hall, the post office, and the library, as well as onsite and on our website. As of date of this report, the city has not received any written or oral comments in favor or opposition of this subdivision. Pursuant to the subdivision map act, a parcel map does require findings and we have made those findings and they're included in your staff report tonight. Basically, the findings show that the proposed map is consistent with the applicable general plan and zoning designations and that the site is suitable for proposed density of development. Conditions of approval were included with the recommended approval. At this time, no development is proposed, like I just said. When the applicant submits an application request to develop the future planning areas, then new conditions will be drafted and the original mitigation monitoring reporting program that was adopted with the E EIR will continue to apply. So to conclude, the project complies with the goals of the general plan, the Groves at Loma Linda specific plan. It is compatible with existing and future uses in the area. Conditions for the map are in place to ensure the appropriate compliance with city standards. And findings were provided in support of the current map and proposal. So staff and the Planning Commission are recommending city council take the following action, determine that no action is necessary in terms of sequo and approve the tentative parcel map. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for question and the applicant is here today to answer any of your questions as well.
Do we have applicants that are submitting plans to implement this?
Yes, that's a great question. So the same applicant that is creating this parcel map is going to be submitting and already has submitted to develop each of those planning areas. So those are in the works and those will come before you in the next couple of months if.
And just because I'm a curious guy, um, any kind of timeframe on these? Because I've been asked about development of, I don't remember the lot numbers, but the businesses up on Redlands Boulevard. Do we have any kind of timeframe on when that may be occurring?
That would probably be the tail end. We don't have a specific time on that yet. Typically, commercial development lags behind residential. You need the rooftops to justify the storefronts. So as we end up filling up those rooftops, then the commercial development along Redlands Boulevard should fill it.
And that makes sense. But do we have any sense of when these rooftops are gonna go up?
The rooftops are, you know, half of them are in now and the other half will be in the next couple of years. So this, we should get out of the planning phase by late spring, early summer. And uh, the only thing that's keeping these guys from working is us. So that they should be starting to grade as as quickly as they possibly could within the next two years. The rooftops will be there, which then probably within the next four or five years, we'll start seeing that commercial development.
And how are these, how is this or these housing developments gonna compare with what's going in there right now with Loma?
The ones under underway now are seventy-two hundred square foot lot developments. Um, this is the, this is a mix of different types of products. So right behind the VA, there's one under construction. It was part of phase one, which is a town, a condo townhome type product. So it's a uh more of an apartment-type feel. South of that, we have one under consideration in the review process now that will be a a condo-type product, but a more a detached product, so it'll have a feel like single-family. But it will be a smaller, you know, like an apartment, more like the the condos there off of um Van Louven and um and Mountain View. They're across from the Chinese church.
On the east side.
Yeah, on the east side. So kind of a detached product. Down in the far south is large lot development, which is ten thousand square feet or larger, which is fairly substantial with the intention that there'll be um custom or semi-custom homes in that area.
But those are two, it's kind of radical ends of the spectrum, right?
Yes, and even up on north on Redlands Boulevard, there will be a traditional um apartment multifamily type product north of the park before you get into that commercial. So we're trying to phase from that density to, can you go back to one of the pictures? It's right there. So in P, the sou- the northern end of PA three is the commercial along Redlands Boulevard. The southern half, because that's mixed use, we can do both on the same piece, will be a traditional apartment-type complex. PA three two is the one that's currently under development as condos. Three, five is that's that detached condo product. And then when we get down into three, six, becomes a large lot development that kind of is even bigger lots than what you're seeing along Mission Road, those Mission Road fronting lots. So they'll be fairly substantial product. And we've got then a complete mix of everything from apartments to condos to the traditional single-family homes to some large lot development in an entire community.
And it will be this, well, without getting too far ahead, should be the same home builder. Is that correct?
I think, we hope so, and I have a feeling the developer hopes so too, because they're just, the builder's easy to work with. But I I believe we're, that is the plan.
And then as a reminder again, that this this completes all of our our numbers in terms of the different types of mixed use that were required for that planning area.
Yeah, that planning area D by the specific plan and what's always been there, I'm trying to remember, was ten fifty-three or ten sixty-three. Just over, just over a thousand dwelling units. So this will complete.
Driving this plan is in part, if not entirely, the requirements that we have from the state.
No, from our our general plan.
From our general plan.
Our general plan.
But our general plan's related to state requirements, right?
Portions of it are. Actually, the, the land use element is not, the land use element is something that the council has adopted and has updated since, since the beginning of the city. Um, the last significant land use element update was, um, the significant one is right after measure V, but we've done a couple of, of fairly large updates, one of them relating to this, this project area in the last ten years. So this, this.
Because I recognize a lot of what's been described, but what, what I'm still a little confused by, I guess, is if I'm wanting to build a, a, you know, I don't remember what, how you referenced it, but a more luxury, large lot for, uh, house, then that condominiums that are adjacent would dim- would diminish the property value of, of my private home or vice versa.
We, what we tried to do is kind of phase that in. So certainly the, the typical apartment project is far to the north. Where we get a condominium that feels more like an apartment project, a little bit looser. And then coming down towards those large houses is the, the detached product. So it feels like a smaller lot type, kind of like the stuff on Mission Road. And then adjacent to that, just like the houses on Mission Road that face Mission, that are fairly large lots, fairly substantial houses, will begin phasing into the, into that area with larger product.
And the difference between a condominium and an apartment is whether I own it or I'm renting it.
That is correct.
Otherwise, they're the same thing.
No, because this, the, the, this detached product really has the look and feel of single family homes. If you're saying apartment, that means you share common walls, common pathways, common borders. These really do have, they're, they're not attached. The buildings are not touching each other.
Okay.
So although you own the condo property, right, the, the building, there is a common property that, that is for the, the entire condo space.
Cause I've driven through the Lenard home development several times. Um, those are not large lots.
Those, those are seventy-two hundreds, the same as yours and, and they, Jarb's.
There was even, there was even some talk, I know this is very early to even be discussing it, but even some talk of potentially horse type property down there too, right?
Um, there was some discussion and, and now we're going very far afield on this. But there, there is, through High Point again, and probably the same, the same builder, um, some, so a project coming in for Santa Mateo Canyon, which is going to be half acre lots. And it probably won't be horse property. They're just, in this area, it doesn't seem to be a demand for that product. But it will actually be even bigger lots, so there, that there's half acre lots in that area. So there's, over the next two or three years, we'll see this full spectrum of housing kind of fill that area out.
I mean, just as an aside, we bought a horse for my daughter and I paid all the bills. I don't see where the economy is, for the economy of scale for horses in a neighborhood.
I don't know if gas gets any higher, I might buy a horse.
Yeah, well, I've got one I can sell you.
The, the worst, the horse I had, you just weigh the horse and weigh dollar bills and that's about the same.
I got a question, kind of going off of that horse comment. I forgot who it was, but someone came a few weeks ago to speak at the council. Density was, was the issue, right? Like, we need more housing, i- it's becoming unaffordable for any first-time home buyer. From my understanding, what you answered is this one, it's set, right? We've already voted on it in the past, so nothing's going to be changed. For the rest of Loma Linda, is there any opportunity, if we wanted to in the future, for higher density allotment?
Um, yes and no. So the, this pro- first, this product does have a whole spectrum of density, which we're, we're very proud that we're able to have this. Essentially, you could live in this area and go from an apartment dweller to a, first-time homeowner. Excuse me, to living on a large lot. Um, the, the remainder of the city, we could increase density in certain areas. However, there is a cap by measure V. And I'm trying to remember, it's thirty, it's thirty per acre. I have to look it up again. So outside of the university, you cannot exceed that thirty per acre, which is pretty much the density of Barton Vineyards or Veterans Village.
Yeah, so if you're referring to what we call very high-density residential R four, that one's zero to twenty units per acre. That's pretty much our highest.
Twenty, not thirty, twenty.
That's pretty much our highest density next to the senior housing.
So barring an, an overturn of measure V, the highest possible density we could get is twenty per acre with some small bonus for senior and low income, which could push it to about twenty-four per acre.
The question last time at the meeting was if, um, the new legislation coming out of the California legislature overturns some parts of measure V, did we decide that that was inapplicable?
We are still not sure. That's, this, this is going to take, not weeks, this is going to take months and, and years to work our way through, um, the impacts of this.
There's actually several cities that are already suing to try to.
Yeah, and we're.
Challenge that.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to overwork our attorneys, let somebody else sue.
I've got one last question. Um, these apartments that are coming in, and I know it's not specific to this one, are they, are they similar to the developments that we've had in the rest of the region, which is high-quality, high, um, high-income apartments?
So cur- currently, the only proposals we have for, right now for three, six are the ten thousand square foot rural estates, as well as the me- the medium-density lot, which is planning three, planning area three, five. And it's, it's not apartments, it's going to be future condos. Um, the, the planning area allows for a hundred and three dwelling units, so it's going to be a hundred and three future condos. And because the builder is also probably likely going to be the neighbor, Le- Lenar, it probably is going to be very similar to what was built in that area, yes. And because it's under the historical, um, mission overlay, they have certain requirements in terms of design and architecture that they can choose from. And they have to stick with that list of the, uh, the available architecture per the historical mission overlay or, or historic mission ordinance.
As, as far as the apartment specifically, um, the objective design standard that we talked about last week and you'll be dealing with here in a few minutes, um, will, will define the new apartments, because those will be the first apartment project under that, that standard. So they, they will be fair, very high-end, very high-finish, high-quality project.
So where we would have apartments, and thank you Conrad for clarifying, is actually in planning area three, three, where it's intended for mixed use. Remember, it's going to be commercial, like Conrad was explaining, probably adjacent to the commercial corridor, Redlands Boulevard, and the residential apartments, hopefully complying with our objective design standards facing the new park. That would be the only area where we would have apartments in this specific plan, next to the senior living apartments, but, per the map.
And I, and I can tell you, Conrad and staff have, uh, they're already in the recruitment process for businesses. So although they will be very guarded and not give up any secrets of who they're talking to, they're talking to people. And there are, there is interest, um, from even current business owners in the city, but potential, uh, big names of stuff that, that could be really good for us out there. So that, that's stuff that's in the works. They are always forward-thinking in that respect.
I have two que- two additional questions. I've driven through the Lenard project and the KB homes and they seem to be selling well. At least there's a lot of cars parked in the garage areas. Are they sold out?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that was first clarification I needed. And I'd like to hear from the developer, when you're talking about selling from apartments to condos to high-end ten thousand square foot lots, how do you market that? I, 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 it's an honest question.
So to understand your question, you're asking how you market the different types of product.
My view, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you're going from here to here. How do you market all of those projects at the same time?
Oh, well, that's a good question. So what you'd like to do is you'd like to have different products in different areas to have the absorptions.
Isn't that big an area though? I mean, it's.
No, no, but it, in general. So if you're asking specifically about this in isolation, um, I would say, and we're going to retain the apartment portion on the north. Our builder, who's going to buy the residential to the south, the hundred and three and the larger lot.
I see.
They're going to have a different timing and program in place. So I can't speak exactly to their timing, although they'd like to accelerate and obviously go as fast as possible. We're planning to come in with a, a design concept this next year in twenty twenty-two for the apartments. And so we, our plan is to have by Q three, Q four of next year, a delivered pad back to us from our purchaser. And then we're going to embark on our development for the apartments.
So this may be an unfair question for you, based on what you just told me. Uh, so there's the apartments, there's the condos. And then in terms of the roughly ten thousand square foot lots that are going to be the high-end homes, um, how individualized are those going to be? So if Councilman Riggsby came in and said, I want three stories and I want all kinds of ponds and, and i- is he going to be able to do that? Or are these going to be, you pick from three standard, uh, models?
It's, it's going to be more of the latter. It's not going to be, from my understanding so far, there, uh, the builder is not a custom builder for this, for this product. So it's not a, you design and get to pick and choose how and.
Okay, so it's not custom homes.
It's not a custom.
So how is that going to be different from the Lenard homes that are in there right now?
If I, if I, I, I hesitate to speak on behalf of, of the builder right now. That, that's going to be up.
You're selling that part of the project off to him.
I, I'm hesitant to respond with a clarified answer.
So what, from a planning side to answer that, is especially out in the desert, like Indian Wells and the, the higher-end communities, they have what, what are called semi-custom product, products. So you have a standard footprint and then on that footprint, you can add on a bedroom and extra whatever part of the building or reconfigure portions within a certain pick and choose type menu. Um, and the same thing with the, the fronts, the facades, the veneers, the roof lines. So that as you're, kind of like, um, custom ordering a car or something, you can kind of pick all the accessories on this. So it's a, it's a semi-custom home. You're not going to tell them, you know, give me, give me a waterfall in the front. But along a palette of choices, you can then do a mix and match. Um, with the intent that we really don't replicate that same product over and over again. One of the things we have talked with, um, the developer in the, the early phases of this, is that typically a development comes in with three, three floor plans and then three elevations per floor plan. Is our very first thing is, is we want five floor plans, five elevations. So that really provides some flexibility. And then we do that customized piece, we should have something that feels like a, a custom, a, a custom community.
Okay. And I think my final question, but we'll see, is, um, what about traffic mitigation? I mean, I've, I've tried to access the ten freeway from California multiple times recently. And i- it is not a pretty picture. This is only going to exacerbate that. So I've got two questions, that, that's the first question. The second question is, has there been any discussion? And I should probably refer this to Councilman Riggsby, since he's our member on what used to be Sandbag, um, of, of a, a train station somewhere down there around the Shell Station where it was originally proposed. Uh, because we're going to have huge, huge traffic issues. And, and that doesn't need, we're not even looking at the school yet. And so tha- that's a concern for me. It's not enough to, you know, dump on the project. But, um, there are already signi- even with the modification of Redlands Boulevard and California intersection, that has been a huge improvement. But man, you get to the freeway and, and it's not a pretty picture.
So once, one, and two pieces to that. Once you get to the freeway, it's Redlands. We, we really have no ability to control that. We can't up to Redlands Boulevard. Um, you know, Jarb has been working the last year on putting together the pieces for the California street widening to really help that traffic flow through.
Right, right.
Part of this project will, will end up signalizing Citrus, Orange and Park. So that we got some, some coherent entry and exit off that California, which is a pain right now. And it's borderline dangerous until we get that signalized. Mission Road will be closed off as soon as we get the signal in down on, what's that, the bottom? Orange, okay. So Mission Road will be closed off when the signal goes in on Orange. That's coming in the next six months or so. And then that Mission Road traffic will hopefully divert to Mountain View. Um, and then part of the design, and if you look at it, um, there's no streets that connect from Mission Road to Redlands Boulevard. And that was specifically done, so that we're not creating any traffic and racetracks through that. That we can put the traffic onto the wide streets that are signalized and are designed to hap- to handle that. And then the internal circulation of that all dumps out onto Redlands Boulevard, which then are, the new intersection that, you know, Jarb did, helps us manage, you know, getting that into the right place. You know, Mountain View is kind of, we, we don't have a way to handle that. We have done a lot of improvements on, on, um, or sorry, on California. We have done a lot of improvements on Mountain View with ramp widening, turn.
But even, even California, if you're, if, if you're looking to on-ramp the ten freeway going east from California, it's not terrible. If you're trying to go west, good luck, take a book with you.
It is, it is a red, and it's something that we, we just have no control over. It's a Redlands, it's in the city, deep in the city of Redlands.
To Councilman Riggsby, who's been an emeritus member of Sandbag now for a lot of years. Has, has this been assessed at all in the discussions with the, the new arrow?
I don't think Califor- and any improvements on California are in the works in the next twenty years.
So the arrow is not going to stop there and there's no, been no discussion of it?
They, they dropped the plans for the, for the California street, uh, stop for the, for the train. It's possible for the future, but they stopped, they dropped it from the initial plan.
It's perplexing for somebody like me that sits in traffic.
Budget decision.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, but they, they put up a station up here on Tippy Canoe, where no, there's no parking and nobody's going to be.
And that's probably why we don't get one on California.
I agree.
They only had enough for, you know, a few stations.
Yeah.
And then whatever ESRI decided to build themselves.
What's that?
Basically, ESRI stole.
Three stations in Redlands.
ESRI grabbed them. They had more, they had more political clout than.
Yeah, but they, they got more money.
Yeah, yeah.
They paid for it, yeah, and that makes sense.
Fair enough.
I think in summary, nothing's going to help with the traffic issue.
Well, that's what we're here for. We're a city council, so we should at least be able to express the issues and try to pursue them, not just throw up our hands.
But it's not, it's not all bad when you have new residential development there. If you think about it, the people who would live there would be coming home at rush hour, when everybody else is leaving. So they're actually not contributing to the bulk of the rush hour traffic. They're actually, uh, retrograde.
On the westbound, I disagree. Westbound is packed all the time.
That.
I go into LA in the evening sometimes, forget it. Westbound ten is a mess morning and evening.
Yeah, and that's, go to the Redland City Council and gripe.
I'm coming to Sandbag to gripe. I mean, you guys are the county transportation.
Sandbag, Sandbag does a a priority study about once every thirty years. And it's not on one, it's not one of the big priorities.
I had to work in LA last week. This is nothing new to any of them, and it's only more than moving further east. I feel bad, I feel bad for the folks that live in Beaumont, because they're, they got one way in and one way out. They sit in that traffic every day, but anyway. Okay, we need to, uh, open the public hearing. So I know we have at least two folks from the public that wanna speak. Uh, Mr. Ship.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilman. I'm Jim Ship. I'm the president of the Loma Linda Area Parks and Historical Society. And past chairman of the Historical Commission. I don't get to talk on their behalf tonight, but I I do know some of the history. And was involved with the creation of the HMOD. So this is, this is a. Project that has been on my mind for the last twenty years, twenty-one years. I think when we were holding a dozen or more hearings on the the Frank Adobe, the Sanha, and the HMOD. If anyone at that point had said that twenty years later, we would, we would be discussing what would happen there. W- we would all have been shocked, including sitting pla- city planners and managers at that time and the Historical Commission Council. Everyone would have been shocked that it would take twenty years to to move from conceptualizing how the missionary would be used. And and then actually happening. Of course, the economy got in the way and and a lot of things happened and didn't happen. I'm old enough to remember University Village and Orchard Park as projects that that were definitely going to happen tomorrow. It didn't. I wanna talk sort of in the future tense, uh, about, um, what you saw as map three dash six. Uh, can I go backward on your thing? There we go. So down in the bottom of, um, three, six, there's laser. Right in there are some existing homes and a a little lot there that contains the Frank Adobe. And I I'm going to tell you a little bit of my personal history with that. Twenty-one years ago, I started a Loma Linda history tour for the students at Brenmore Elementary School. Since that time, every year except for now during COVID, uh, I have led several hundred students per year. It's been over four thousand students in the last twenty years and several hundred adults on a history tour of our community. And the Frank Adobe, which is in three dash six, is a key part of that. Um, I have personally toured those students to the Frank Adobe, and sometimes we've had members of the Frank family there. Um, that's the only pioneer family that's ever been represented when we've discussed the the history of our community. And, um, at some point, High Point is going to come to you, and they're going to ask you to approve plans. Individual, um, plot maps for those lots. And when you see the the Frank Adobe to be preserved, you're going to notice that there are some proposed lots next to it. In the past, it was the hope and dream of the Historical Commission and of the Historical Society that the Frank Adobe would one day become. A historical and cultural archival and and museum-type center for our community, a place to house our history. At this point, we have no such thing. We have no place to keep the the documents, the artifacts, the educational elements. That we use to share the the history of our community with our students and and the adults who live here. When I take students there, we are in two or three school buses. And, um, parking has been challenging in an agricultural area. We've often had to park our buses on dirt roads and on gravel and neighbors' front yards with their permission. And I would ask you to look forward to the time when you're approving, uh, actual development plans. Because the development plan will show the Frank Adobe preserved, but as a single lot. With absolutely no place to hold public events and no place to park school buses for tours. I've also taken a number of van tours there, and, um, we would hold more, um, public historical events at the Frank Adobe. If it were accessible. Right now, it's it's chained off. It's it's completely fenced for its protection. Um, but it is the only property in Loma Linda that is on the State Register of Historic Places. It is one of two, uh, the Van Leuven Mansion is about the equivalent age. They both were finished about the same time. Um, that hearken back to the American pioneer time in the West. So almost immediately after the Gold Rush, the the Franks and the Van Leuven's and other families arrived. Here in California and took up residence on Mission Road. So I would ask you, please, to be mindful of that and think about how the Frank is going to be used. Not just to preserve it, because I think that's a given, that that's really a requirement. It's on the State Register. There's no one asking for it to be demolished or or removed. But I ask you to think about how we will use it. For the last twenty-one years, it's been part of a history tour and and we've held events there. And I would like that to be able to continue. I would hope that the vision of the Historical Commission and the community in those public hearings who asked for it. That that the Frank Adobe would actually perform a service to the community in preserving and sharing, educating. About the the history of this community. And it needs more space. So my request would be that that when three dash six comes before you. That the Frank Adobe, um, retain one additional lot next to it to provide more room for parking. And for, um, community events that are related to the history of it. So that we can continue to hold tours there and hopefully, uh, retain it as a as as a vibrant archival center to preserve our history in Loma Linda. And that is my request. Are there any questions?
Uh, my question is, what is your, uh, perspective on the building itself? Because it's a unsafe architectural mess right now. And what what do you think would be the public interest in rejuvenating it?
I would be cautious about the unsafe architectural mess part, because it is an historic building. So, uh, under the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines, our our approach to it needs to be, what can we do? To keep it safe and to keep it protected and to restore it. Uh, the commission asked about ten or fifteen years ago for an engineering study, and the budget at that time didn't allow that to ever happen. The, um, east end of the building has been stabilized, thanks to Jarb and contractors who were employed by the city to to stabilize that end of it. It needs a new roof. It should probably not be a wet building. That is, it probably should not contain plumbing. Um, if the public's going to be using it, let's say it was a a museum or archival center. Um, it would be best, I think, to build, uh, bathrooms in a separate building away from it. And keep that building dry, because it's unreinforced Adobe. It's built with the ground literally from around the building. So it's native soil. It's not stabilized with asphalt or any anything. Um, and it's certainly structurally sound with the exception of that east wall, which has been stabilized, at least on a temporary basis. Um, it definitely needs a new roof. It definitely needs, um, a lot of repair to the woodwork. Um, but it is a sound building, and it was occupied until, um. Our agreement with the citrus company expired and and tha- it was abandoned on on their part. Um, but it does need to be preserved and protected. It should be a, um, a mitigation. It should be a condition of approval for a any project involving, um, this parcel map. That, um, whoever develops that area participate in the protection and and renovation of the building. It should not be modified. Part of the reason that it was included on the State Register is that it has not been radically modified. There's a section of it that it was added on, but it was added on so long ago that it retains historic value, uh, itself. Um, so we we really do as as stewards of our history. And stewards of this fertile crescent of the inland empire. I mean, this is, this is the home of the citrus industry. This is where it happened. Some of the trees behind the Frank Adobe, which are hopefully slated for preservation. Uh, precede naval oranges. They're they're older than the eighteen seventies. And they're part of what made the Mission Area and then the Redlands Area at large, the the citrus giant that it was. In the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. So it it's our responsibility as as stewards and caretakers of our community and our history to take care of that building. Because it it has belonged to the city or the redevelopment agency or the cloud, um, for the last many years. But it is, it's ours to take care of. It's not a private property at this point. And, uh, and I would ask that you give it a little bit more breathing space so that we can have parking and we can do events. And 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 really make use of it there. And don't confine it to a single city lot. Because that's going to make it very hard to use it, um, for for any practical community purposes. Okay, thank you.
All right, sir.
Oh, and another question.
My question is actually directed to the city manager, Associate City Manager. Um, this is not directly impacting the proposal that we're actually discussing right now.
Not tonight, no. This is a heads up for the future.
So my question is, are are there prospective proposals that would impact what he's talking about?
You'll be, so you will be seeing in the future the track maps for that that will address issues that he's talking about.
So it i- it is an issue that's, uh, pending?
Yeah, I mean, this this is why we're doing this tonight, is so we can do the next step at some point in the next six months.
Okay.
So, yeah, this this will come to you and and we are, we are way ahead of, ahead, over our skis on this. Because before it comes to you, there is, uh, the applicant and us have a lot of arm wrestling to do yet. And then it still has to go to pla- a Historic Commission, Planning Commission.
Who owns the property that it's on?
The applicant. Right now, High Point does. But we have a contractual agreement with them that allows us to come in and take care of the property. That's why we keep it fenced.
Yeah.
Um, we keep the, we have irrigation to all the trees out there right now. Last winter, we put tarps over the roof. We'll probably do that again this winter to protect it. Um, some of the conditions of approval with High Point is that they will have to stabilize the remainder of the property. They'll have to re-roof the building. They'll probably have to touch up some of the wood trim around it and get it back to something. And and we are, you know, we're working with them on, you know, respectfully taking care of that piece of property. That's an important piece of of what's going on here. We're, we've identif- we're working with their their arborist on identifying a, not all of the trees, but a fairly decent chunk of the heritage trees. That are in there. And one of the things that we've, we've worked with them, or we're working with them, is to see if we can take. And University of Riverside, California is is probably gonna help us on this, to take grafts off of those heritage trees. And then put them on modern rootstock so that as we plant additional citrus, at least in that area. That they are, they are relatives of those traditional heritage trees.
Right.
So we're we're trying to be as respectful as we possibly can to that area, 'cause it, it's an important part of the city.
So that fits with what you're proposing?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, good. Thanks, Jim.
And I just wanna make it clear, I'm not in any opposition to the the parcel map. Uh, I think that's, uh, it's a logical step to take in this process. But I I do want to alert you to what will be in front of you within the next few weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I think you did have one more question, Mr. Ship, sorry.
Not for him.
Oh, come on, apologize.
Yes. Why didn't we just, um, make that part green? So park slash open space?
That, the parcel that the, wh- when we come back with that, the track map. That the Frank House and the surrounding property will be a part, will be a city park.
Cool.
And will be preserved and will be responsible for that. Actually, one of the things, and and Joe Frank is has kind of started the groundwork on that as we progress. Once again, we're way out ahead of our skis on this, is there's the the Two Canyons Conservati- Conservancy. That specifically works on conserving and protecting, um, historic properties through the Santa Mateo Canyon region. This property would be an ideal one for us to deed over to them as part of the conservancy to maintain. And that's, that's what those guys do. We're, that's not what we do. So that may be something. We're exploring that. We're probably, like I said, probably a year or two ahead of ourselves on that. But, um, we really wanna get this thing back fixed into a into a park. And then so people can use it and appreciate it for what it is.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Frank.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, good evening. I just wanna expand on what Mr. Ship said, and I totally agree with him. I won't, uh, binge your ear too long, because it's, we're probably ahead of, a little ahead of the game. But I have seen the, uh, plot map, uh, that High Point, uh, proposed, or is going to propose in the next few weeks. And there are three lots to the east of the Adobe, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen in area three, six. And when you calculate the size of the Adobe lot, it it calculates out at about fourteen thousand square feet. Which is pretty tiny for that area. I'm also on the board of the TCC, which is the Twin, Two Canyons Conservancy, which Conrad was talking about. And it's gonna consist of between ten and thirteen thousand acres of Santa Mateo Canyon. East to Blue Ridge Mountain in Grand Terrace. Uh, I'm part of the history part of it, of course, 'cause I know a lot of the history out here. But they, like Conrad had said, they would, they would like to see it as a destination point. Uh, included in in this and make it a learning center, educational center. And the whole thing would be a stopover that the Mission Inn is gonna be involved in and going to promote. Uh, an extra day at the Mission Inn. They, their big market is weekends. They would like to increase that to an extra day. The, uh, High Point's suggestion too, the plot map, uh, from what I can see. Uh, the the road, D Street, turns and goes east, uh, from a north direction. It turns and goes east behind the barn. We would definitely like to save that too, if at all possible. Because that would be a great cultural center for children to come and learn and make things, education-wise. And, uh, I don't see where that, at this point, would be in in the way of anything. I mean, it would take up a lot, but there's a possibility that that maybe the Conservancy could buy that from the developer. Or the city or whoever owns it. Uh, anyway, I don't wanna take up any more of your time. That's just my suggestions. And I agree with Mr. Ship that that the, if if we don't, aren't able to get those other lots, or at least one more lot. Uh, to the east of it, it's gonna be very difficult to get anything in there with the road medium there and make a turn with any large equipment. Uh, eventually, you won't be able to come in from the back or from the side, so you'll only have one entrance and one exit. The other thing is, uh, one of the, uh, council members was asking about the condition. I spent about five hours in there one day cleaning it out. And I think it's an amazing condition for a hundred and seventy-five-year-old structure. I saw some dry rot. I didn't see any fresh termites. Uh, there was a lot of rat messes in there, but I didn't see any rats. Um, and I wanna thank the city council for a set of keys to it, too. That was very nice. I don't, does everybody know that? Does everybody know that I got a? Does everybody know that I got a set of keys to the lock? Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. It was no ceremony. It was just presented by Brian. So, I hope I'm not burning anybody down here. But anyway, I spent about five hours in there cleaning it and during a hot summer day, and it looks pretty good actually now. That one wall that Mr. Ship commented on, it's, I think it is very well stabilized and I appreciate you doing that. I've also been in contact with an Adobe restoration company out of the San Diego area, and he wanted to immediately come up and make an assessment of it. And I said, "No, hold off a while." And I asked him what it costs, and he told me. And I would, myself would be willing to pay for that. It'd be around $1,000. And I myself, if there's any hope of saving this Adobe, which I love, and making it some kind of historical site, I will pay that money for the assessment gladly. So, that's about all I've got to say. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else? We'll close the public comment portion, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second, Madam Clerk.
The motion is to determine that no action is necessary for the California Environmental Quality Act because of the previously adopted environmental impact report prepared for the groves at Loma Linda specific plan and to approve the tentative parcel map application number P-21-086 for map 20389 to subdivide 76.1 acres and create four conveyable parcels within the groves at Loma Linda specific plan. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettempe Dayly?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
It passes, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull items 7A, 7B, and I have a question on 8A.
Any other ones? All right, Mr. City Manager? 7A, 7B?
What was your question?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I guess he's got to ask the question first.
I thought he said city manager, so. I admit, I had to scan this afternoon because I had a busy day on the consent calendar. Traffic signal at California Street and Citrus Avenue. I'm choking on another traffic signal, so help me justify that.
Well, you just talked about the traffic on California Street.
Yeah, but I'm talking about California Street north of Redlands Boulevard.
Oh, this is going to be south of Redlands Boulevard.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So, what we are doing right now is the project is going out to bed to widen California Street from Orange Street to Indonesian Church. It's already widened.
To what church?
Indonesian.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So, and then as part-
So, we have all the right of ways we need to expand it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, good.
So, they gave us for free and-
Wow.
Yes.
We don't get anything for free. That's great.
So, so-
Even our attorney's not free, so.
So, as part of the improvement will be, we're putting a storm drain pipe, storm drain because they would have a rain flood. So, we're putting a storm drain first, and then as part of the, we'll put in a traffic signal at California and Orange as part of the improvement.
Okay, yeah.
So, the next intersection over to the north is Citrus. So, what we're going to do is as part of street widening, we're going to put in all the conduit, all the facility to get ready for the traffic signal. So, what this is, is to hire a traffic engineer to design a layout and design these traffic signal so that during construction, I will put all the conduit in, the sleeve for the conduit, future conduit in.
So, this is not approving the traffic signal at this point, just the preparation?
Yes, sir. But you will because this is part of the master plan.
But then between Barton on California going north, between Barton and Redlands, there will be two additional traffic signals?
There will be at Park and Citrus, and eventually will be at Park Avenue. At Orange, Citrus, yes.
Yeah, you approved that.
You're not helping me out here, Tom.
And they will be, they will be demand signals depending on how many people want to come out of the new developments. It's not going to be constantly cycling.
Correct. It'll be true that California will have a major, I mean, what's the word? Priority.
And if you've ever tried to turn left onto California coming from Redlands, or especially around school pickup time?
Yes.
You can't. This is much needed.
Yes.
Now, the traffic study that was done on the original growth plan that you guys approved in 2016 had those, was it 15? 18. Had those signals as part of that and was part of the traffic mitigation to allow so that these residents could get in and out safely onto California and also ease that traffic through California.
And we will put in the landscape median on California to prevent the, or subdivision-
Weed tolerant, right?
That's important. That I'm supportive of.
But he also wants to make sure there's no weeds in it.
I, I, that's true, too. That's true, too. No, I mean, Dr. Rigsby won election how many times now based on the fact that he eliminated some stop signs? And now we're adding traffic stops, so I'm trying to be sure I understand the rationale behind it. But he lives so far to the west.
It's the price of progress.
He doesn't drive California.
Well, I do. I do. I drive all over Loma Linda. And the last thing you want is fatal collisions on California with people coming out of their homes.
How am I supposed to object to that when you say fatalities? But it, you know-
If you're that easy to convince-
I'm going to avoid-
Some national politics to convince you of.
Oh, boy, it had to come in. The, I'm going to avoid California then and go to, what is the next street down?
New Jersey.
New Jersey. I'm going to camp on New Jersey to avoid California because it's going to be a mess. If you have two additional traffic signals, I don't see it, but.
Well, that's why I'm doing bases. That's why Orange and Orange going first.
I understand, but I'm looking at the outcome.
So, I have to go up and down California and develop.
Okay.
Price of progress.
Well, okay. Technical studies and sequoia initial study for the Bozwater reservoir. Help me understand that.
Okay, so we are doing design right now to put in a 1.6 million gallon reservoir up in the hill behind the dock.
The park, right.
Yes, yes. And as part of doing that, we're going to be disturbing the ground, so we have to do a sequoia environment study.
And, because there's all, excuse me, there's already a reservoir up there.
That will be low.
Oh, so it's going to be higher than the one?
Right. It'd be the same elevation as the one to the, to the west, when you go up Mountain View.
Yeah.
There's this one up there already.
So, what's the sequence that they're going to tell us?
It's mandated by the state law that we have to do it.
Yeah, so it's going to tell us it's safe. It's not going to break open.
Yes, sir. I'm not disturbing the animals and the trees and species.
But there's, yeah, there's already a reservoir below it.
Correct. And the Edison put in a big transportation tower right near it, so, yes. But the state law required we have to do environment.
Oh, I understand the state law.
Yes.
I'm just quite, what's the benefit to us having that? Yeah.
We have over 1,000 homecoming into Loma Linda, so we need more-
That's how we provide water.
More water, sir, so.
But the water we get is a straw, as Mr. Rigsby tells us, is a straw in the lake that we're sitting on.
Yes.
So, all that means is we draw more up in the straw.
This is a high-altitude pressurized water source.
That's how we get water pressure.
The purpose for the reservoirs is to pressurize the water. So, we pump it uphill so that it comes down with gravity and pressurizes into their house.
But the water issue doesn't change.
It gets worse.
It just flows faster.
It gets worse. There are more people sucking on the straw.
Well, that's my point. That's my point.
Since the chairman of the San Juan Valley Municipal Water District is here, we just went through all of that. They, we, including the city of Loma Linda and them and the city and the water agency that sucked the water out of the Bunker Hill Basin, just did the regional water management plan. And they studied, they identified that with this Bunker Hill Basin currently have over almost 80, 185% fill. So, we have, we have plenty of water in our basin, and the reason for that is we have been doing a good job, I say we again, purchase the water from Northern California, Northern California, and bring it down and fill up our water basin.
And I have to, and if anybody can explain it, Milford can, but I am still confused, I have to confess, that we look at snowpack, we look at rain, you know, numbers, we look at our water basin and everything, and I mean, my wife is on me like white on rice to conserve water.
We should be too.
And, and, yeah, and the city is too.
Yes.
We've got signs all over the place that say we're conserving water.
Yes.
So-
But it's a growth. There's growth that we have to build houses, and if we don't build, the other city will build, and it has sucked the water from the same basin, so.
I understand.
And what we try to do as a group, as a water agency, is purchase the water, conserve water, and make sure that we have water for the future.
So, I'm going to be a smart aleck here.
Yes, sir.
And this is totally smart aleck. Why do we have to expand so much if we're running low on water?
Well, that's, that would be a question you probably should ask the governor then because we have a housing shortage in California and the directive is build, build, build.
To go completely off the map, you have two sons. They need to, to go completely off the map, you have children, they need a place to live. I mean, assume they're not going to live with you, right? So, that means we've got to build a house for them someplace.
I don't have to build all kinds of houses down here near YD for them.
Where else would you build them? Build them in Murrieta or New York or?
And, I'm being a smart aleck, I admit that.
So am I. I'm engaging the smart aleck.
I admit that. But at some point, there's got to be some intersection of these issues because we're low on water, but we're not that low on water. And yet, the city is charging me more because I like a green, I like green grass instead of brown grass, and there's, there's an accelerating fee schedule. I don't think we're dealing with the deep issues here, I'll be honest with you. I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
And I don't have a fundamental objection to this, but it's not a fit for me with all the things we've been talking about related to water conservation for the last three, four, five years.
7A.
Eight. Eight. You had a question about eight also.
8A, yeah, okay. Tell me about the new sign and why we're putting a new sign.
Someone broke it up.
Yeah, so we ran into that sign for the, it's the second or third time. So, we put a new one back and-
So, do we have to pay for it?
Oh, did the insurance pay for it? Or is that one hidden run?
Were they identified? I don't know that they were identified, right?
We do go after whoever hits it as long as they don't take off after they do, and we go after their insurance for reimbursement.
Can we, can we make the new one out of airbag material?
As a matter of fact, I'm looking for it right now that we make out of styrofoam.
Seriously?
If we don't want it at Mountain View.
I was going to say, make it out of concrete so when they hit it, it really hurts.
We did that on the east side of Mountain View.
Yes.
And somebody hit it, and they're going to sue us because they destroyed a car, almost killed the driver.
I've said too much tonight already. I'm okay. All right.
And let's look at B. Barton Road turned out very nice and for the pavement, we have a rotation of Barton Wood from Waterman to California.
I agree. I agree.
Orange Grove, Academy, Parkland, Red Mar.
Was this the same contractor we've used before?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because it just seems a little bit more rollercoastery than I remember.
There's two different contractors, there's two different contractors, All American and-
Because there's, there are parts of it that are a lot of-
Remember, we talked about that on Redlands Boulevard? Did they do Redlands Boulevard, too?
No.
Who did that one?
This one is not the regular one that, it's All American, the one that did a good job, but you know, this is. And the city, San Juan paid for part of the one within their city.
Who did? Oh, Sam or the thing.
Yes.
Did you already cash the check?
I'm sending the bill.
Okay, I move the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Madam Clerk.
And the motion is to approve the items on the city council consent calendar. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettempe Dayly?
How do we, I'll turn to the city attorney. How do we handle this? Because I'm not supportive of 7A, but I support the rest of the consent calendar.
Well, then you would just remove 7A and vote on that separately. Vote on the remaining items on the consent calendar and then come back to 7A.
Okay, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay, so we'll pull 7A. So, we'll need a new motion on the rest of the consent calendar.
I move the consent calendar other than 7A.
Okay.
Second.
Got it? Okay.
Okay, and the motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar with the exception of 7A, the preparation of plans for the traffic signal at California Street and Citrus Avenue. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Councilman Dayly?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
I move 7A.
Okay, we have a motion for 7A?
Second.
And a second?
And the motion is to award the contract for the preparation of plans for the traffic signal at California Street and Citrus Avenue. Councilman Jindal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettempe Dayly?
No.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think it's time for me to retire.
Right. I am looking forward to 7A and the rest of everything.
Good for you.
I ask almost every month about that. Because I'm tired of people doing 100 miles an hour past my house.
You're on a mission.
It, but mission will be cul-de-sacced off and it'll route through that intersection. That's the master plan. Okay, moving on to item number 12. This is our second reading of, sorry, Conrad went to the restroom.
Well, this is just the second reading for what we presented-
Yes.
At the last meeting, so.
Do we have any questions or any follow-up? I know we'd already made some plans on how we're going to address things into the new year, but do we have any issues with that or can we move it?
I move Council Bill O-2021-06 and instruct the city clerk in her remaining month of office to read it by title only and all the other lingo that makes it happen.
Okay, we have a first.
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk? Will this be the last one?
No, I want more.
Oh, all right, okay.
No.
We might have to record it.
And the motion is to adopt Council Bill number O-2021-06, and it is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Amending the Loma Linda Municipal Code by Development Code Amendment Number P-20-183 to-" And it is entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Amending the Loma Linda Municipal Code uh, by Development Code Amendment Number P twenty dash one eighty-three to establish regulations for objective design standards. Councilman Jendal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pertempre Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the city council. Oh, I'm sorry, were there any reports of officers?
Yes, sir. I want to remind you that the section of Barton Road between Campus and Anderson will be closed during the day uh, for the placement of the bridge crossing Barton Road. There will be a detailed plan. So that's be on, uh, November twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth. During the day.
For how, for how long?
Three days.
Three days.
Three days.
More, two and a half days, so.
And you mentioned during the day, but, but it'll be closed in twenty-four seven, correct?
No, it'll be open at night.
They'll open at night?
Yes. As soon as the crane move on the, off the street, then we, we open up.
And I.
Emergency room access for the, for the ambulance service is still gonna be available.
Even during the, during the day?
I had a, I had a question a couple of weeks ago. Somebody coming in, flying into the emergency room and they pass Prospect, which is where you're supposed to turn into currently. When is the Barton Road entrance to the emergency department gonna be open?
No, sir. It, 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 the Barton Road to the ER is only for the ambulance and the fire department. That's it.
Oh.
Yes, the regular.
Are there gonna be signs that basically distinguish that?
Sign on top of the street name sign, be a red sign that say, emergency room with the arrow at Prospect, at, at Barton.
Yeah, but emergency room with an arrow doesn't tell me it's ambulance only.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about to the, for the public to go around. The ambulance know where to go.
Well, I'm sure they do, but the public.
No.
I'm talking to somebody that went to the ER and they went around on Barton and couldn't get into the ER.
There's two different entrances for the public and to the emergency, to the ambulance service.
So the signage needs to be explicit with that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And the medical center's gonna handle that?
Yes.
Because it's not now. Cause I just drove it.
We, we just reviewed that last week, so.
Okay, okay. Good, good. Thank you.
Okay, any other reports of officers?
I have one. Good evening. Jarb wanted me to report on something that we recently heard about. And it's as part of the American Response Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. The state water board is administering a program called the California Water Arrearage Payment Program. And it helps make direct payments to community water systems to cover arrearages which are past due bills resulting during the COVID nineteen pandemic emergency. So we received a notification in August and we went ahead and applied or filled out a survey. And then, uh, we submitted the survey on September tenth and then we submitted the application on November fourth. So as a result of this, um, water utility customers that have a rearage of sixty days or more will be able to, um, will receive money for them and we will cover the water portion that is owed on their bills for the timeframe of March fourth, twenty twenty through June fifteen, twenty twenty-one.
Do they have to specifically apply or we can?
They do not have to apply. We have a listing of those accounts. Uh, we've already done the footwork. And as soon as the money is dispersed and we receive it, we have sixty days to apply the payment to their accounts. We will notify those customers and we'll explain the program and then let them know that that amount has been applied.
You tell the, the council how much money are we talking about?
So we have a total of two hundred and seventeen residential accounts and a total seventy-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Wow.
Yeah. I, I know we had talked about people in delinquency, uh, and it was quite high. I don't want to repeat the number publicly, but we had a lot of people that maybe by necessity took advantage of not having to pay their bills here in town. And so I, it goes to another, one of your thoughts there, Dr. Daley, is that, you know, we, we expend city funds to cover a lot of this stuff and we haven't been necessarily getting paid back by the residents on their bills. So this is an opportunity to get some money. Dr. Rigsby?
This is not the city getting money back. This is residents being rewarded for not paying their bills. So can we ask the state to let us know in advance what they're going to reimburse so that we can all quit paying our bills? If we're gonna encourage bad, if we're gonna encourage bad behavior, I think we should all participate in it.
Well, the cutoff was June fifteen, twenty twenty-one, so it will not cover anybody that's in your arrears right now.
Yeah, I'm sure, but I'm just opposed in general to things that reward bad behavior and I think the state government does that on a regular basis. I think it's very foolish.
I think we can also take it as some people that needed help or.
That may be, that may be, but there may be a whole bunch of people who just didn't pay their bills because they heard there was a.
Unfortunately, I've, I've looked at some of the reports and if you look at the addresses and, um, I'm, I'm positive there were people that struggled here in town. I'm, I'm positive of that. But I also know a lot of people remained employed because they were employed by the medical profession or whatnot. And so just looking at some of this stuff loosely, um, I do think people took advantage of it and are still probably taking advantage of it. But I agree, there are definitely some.
Bad public policy.
Yeah. Speaking of bad behavior, um, an update on the, the concerts at the Orange Show.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that went off.
They did a lot better this last weekend.
Weekend before last, they set up a monitoring station at my house. We had a tour of the facility. It's very interesting because you think it's one concert, that's not the case. The, the grounds there are set up and there's multiple venues on site. So they have the main concert hall and then as many as seven or eight different performances going on around, around the, the campus there. So it's probably really hard to shape the sound because it's coming from multiple sources. On the positive side, and this is just, I mean, I'm not a sound engineer, but my observation is the main hall that they have is kind of pointing straight at Grand Terrace and it looks like a megaphone pointing straight into the heart of the city.
Not our problem.
It's, we're, if, if they're complaining, they're getting hammered with that. Um, fortunately, on Friday night, we had a little bit of bass, not too bad, and they did kind of manage it after about nine-thirty. Saturday and Sunday really didn't sound like anything. Sunday, I thought maybe they canceled it. Um, both of those nights, if you recall, were kind of foggy and really humid. So I'm suspecting that the humidity in the air and the fog maybe sucked up some of that sound that really kept it from, from hitting us too hard. So the last, last event did not hit us too bad. Um, there will be between now and the next council meeting, just so you're aware, and I'll send out the phone number again to all of you. Uh, three events, November nineteenth and twentieth. Uh, the following weekend on the twenty-seventh, a one-day event. And then the Rolling Loud event on December tenth, eleventh and twelfth.
It's not a good label.
Um, so over the next, the next four weeks, there are, there are, you know, five weeks, there are three events, event weekends. And, um, you know, the last one in December is a three-day weekend. So as, as you get complaints or comments, you know, please feel free to direct them. Once again, we'll set up the monitoring. They'll have the monitor at my house. I'll be listening. We'll be paying attention to that. I'm looking for the phone number right now. Here it is. And, and just so everybody, if anybody's watching and for you, it's four-two-four-three-zero-three-six-zero-one-seven.
Is it your number or their number?
Not my number. I don't want.
I'm calling you.
But it's on the, on the nights of the events, you, you can call four-two-four-three-zero-three-six-zero-one-seven if there are noise complaints. They do send people out to take readings, um, locally. Uh, from what I understand from our, our sheriff's officers, that we had zero noise complaints from Loma Linda. Grand Terrace had a couple of them. One of the Grand Terrace complaints was a Loma Linda resident over on Con Drive, the far, probably the farthest westerly street you can get, right up against the cemetery there. Um, which was probably right in the, the megaphone path from the hall. So, um, it, once again, we were pretty lucky this time. Hope, we'll pray for fog for the next three weeks.
So what's interesting, uh, when this came up a week or two ago, we talked about it. I did a little, I was Googling, looking for a phone, looking for a phone number uh, for them and for some information for the Orange Show. And I found some, uh, news articles and interviews, uh, from previous sheriff's department folks. Um, I don't know if you know some of the stuff I'm talking about, but there were some quotes and, uh, back from twenty twelve and, um, the, the sergeant in charge from the sheriff's department at that time uh, had a theory and the theory was, is that originally a lot of the stages and a lot of the music and everything was pointed north. And that the city of San Bernardino, apparently there's several retirement homes or retirement facilities that are north of that in that pathway. And there were so many complaints to the city of San Bernardino that that's when they turned everything and faced it south. I don't know how correct or true that is. And I'm, that, that was his belief and I, I mean, I'm not questioning his belief, but it, it's kind of interesting and fascinating if that's truly the case, that San Bernardino in an attempt to solve their own issue uh, created issue for the South End cities.
You know, walk, walking around their site, I, I don't think that maybe was the case. It's just the way the buildings are laid out and they have a, a large area around, I don't know how familiar you are with the Orange Show grounds. That where that pond area is, there's kind of an area next to that that has some of their central space. So I don't know that they could operationally flip it. But it is a great story that, yeah. Alright.
Yes, sir.
Um, you, you know that what, about a month ago, I got multiple complaints. I got enough complaints, I called Jarb about eleven, eleven-thirty and woke him up. Eleven fifty-nine, okay. And, and last Saturday night, I take my dog out to water her every, you know, about nine-thirty, ten, ten-thirty, somewhere in there. And I could hear it, but it was muffled. It was no problem. I did not get one phone call. So I was impressed. I thought, wow, this, uh, Conrad guy is up to speed because it turned the whole thing around. It really did.
I think we should send a council emissary, that, um, Dr. Daley should attend the concert.
Yeah, right. There you go.
For the rest of us and then report back.
They, they did make the offer that if anyone in the council or staff would like to attend, they will get us passed to go to the concert. I could not think of anything more painful, but.
If, if you attend, will you ask them, please speak into the microphone?
I will because my hearing is beginning to disappear. Um, but I'm gonna take, uh, I'm, I'm gonna take, uh, our mayor with me to go to the concert. So his ears are better than mine are.
I'm gonna have a baby by then. It's gonna need to sleep.
I was impressed. I thought, wow, this has really worked because I could hear it, but it was muffled and I had no complaints.
I am hoping that they actually did something and it wasn't just because it was foggy and the fog absorbed the, the sound. And that is kind of my, my, my guess, not knowing anything better. We'll, we'll know after the next four weeks.
Four weeks in a row?
We have the, the, the nineteenth, the, the twentieth, the twenty-seventh and December tenth, eleventh and, uh, twelfth. So yeah, over, over, over four, five weeks, there will be three weekends of concert.
We had, um, one of my colleagues from, um, Grand Terrace's Darcy, what is it?
McNaboe.
McNaboe. Boy, she'll let you know. I'm telling you. She lets me know and I don't even live in Grand Terrace.
They were on the tour and very outspoken, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I raise one? You, you didn't ask for.
Yes, our reports of council, yes, I was gonna do us last. Yes.
This is an ongoing issue for me, as you know, Jarb, and I meant to come in earlier today and tell you, but I had a busy day. But, but the, the southbound entrance off the ten freeway on Mountain View, the weeds are growing up and then, and then when we get to where Subway is, that, that's been a total mess for years, I think. And I don't know what to do about it. Because that, that's, he needs, he or she needs to understand, that's one of the main entrances to our city.
Is that the one that where Adong is? Yeah. You know, we, we find them, they correct it. Then we, you know, it goes on for a period of time. It gets bad. We find them, they correct it.
Yeah, but how do they correct it? They don't turn the water on because it's all brown grass.
They chop back their weeds, they clean up whatever. We, they get it cleaned up, we, to a passable state. And then they let it go again and then we find them. It's just a recurring, you, you could almost put it on the calendar when we need to mail out their citation.
Okay, so in my water bill, it's a progressive bill. If I use a minimum water, I get one price. If it's more than minimum, it's another price. If it's more than that, it's another price. Can't we have that kind of a system with people that are chronic, uh, landlords that ignore?
Uh, we, we do have a progression, but once you've, once you've corrected, just like your water bill resets every month. Once you've corrected, then it goes back to the, the beginning. So you, you can get a, I believe it's fifty, a hundred and then a two-hundred dollar citation. But it's for the same issue. And once you've resolved it, then we go back to the fifty.
Okay.
I, I can't give you progressive speeding tickets. And, and we are, we are making it as uncomfortable as possible for them. The other, the other scoff law that we have on that corner is the Dollar Tree with the trash and stuff in the parking lot. We, we routinely cite them as well. They clean it up. And then a month later, we go back and cite them. And for both of them, I think it's just their cost of doing business.
Dollar Tree, actually. They had a little fire, a little spot fire there next to, uh, the Dollar Tree a couple of weeks back. Um, I don't know if it was a transient or whatever, but some trash on the.
And when is O'Reilly's supposed to open? I'm excited about that. That, that's a very, very good store.
We're, we're probably still two or three months out. The Shell building is done or really close to done. And then there's a second group that comes in and then does actually the store build out, the cabinets, the shelves, the displays and the finish, the tenant improvement.
Oh, oh, yeah, no. That I understand. I've heard that a few times already. The, the, and the, uh, what is it? Optomology at Richardson and Redlands?
Yes, he's under construction.
I mean, they're making Headway. When's that supposed to open?
Um, ju- just judging by the speed of construction, that, that could be by the time he's in functioning as much as a year. That's a big building. There's a lot going on there.
And immediately behind that is another motel or hotel?
Um, to down Richardson farther to the north.
Right.
Um, he started grubbing and grading for the Candlewood Hotel. And then we just had the, um, just took in the plans and the, the original planning review for the Marriott. Which will, was in planning commission. We're bringing that back with some changes. So you guys will be seeing.
I thought the Marriott was already there.
There's a Holiday Express and a Town Place.
A Town Place. But Town Place is owned by Marriott, yeah.
Yeah, and then there'll be the Candlewood and then the Marriott, um.
It's gonna be a hotel center. That's great.
It was, it was designed that way. And part of the, once again, we're going off the reservation again, but part of the, the plan for that site is, is that each one of those hotels brings a unique set of amenities.
Yeah.
And that in aggregate, if you're staying in that, we're calling it Hotel Square, that Hotel Square, Square area, you have the equivalent of staying at a decent resort with all the, the pieces there. One of them has concierge services, one of them has kind of a restaurant and a little bar area, the other.
Because I was gonna say, that would be an ideal location for a Denny's or some kind of restaurant.
The eye, the opto, optom, uh, whatever, the eye doctor place. Part of his plans and what we required in the construction is on the far easterly side of that building. It's already pre-plumbed and pre-built for a commercial kitchen and restaurant. And he's, he's looking for a tenant.
If it's east, then it's off Richardson?
Off Richard, it'd be on the corner of Richardson and Redlands Boulevard.
Oh, really?
So that piece is already, as they're building it, the gas lines, the vents, the electricity, the water is already in place.
Oh, wow.
Now, whether we, you know, whether he can find a tenant, um, is, is up in the air. And we're working with them to find somebody and, and there are a couple of, uh, a couple of prospects. Whether or not they come through, I don't know.
Okay, and then, um, I had several people contact me since the last council meeting concerned and frustrated and unhappy that Angelo's is closing. Do they?
Yes.
Cause I went down and volunteered to be a, you know, check, a checkout at the counter for him and he, he said they can't find people to. he said they can't find people to work.
An- Angelo's is, has cut back their hours dramatically.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, with the challenges and, and, you know, they've had that for a long time, they're just looking to get out of the business. And so there is.
Oh, really?
They are in negotiations now to sell that.
Yeah, that's fine.
To another, it is another local restaurant, so it's another restaurant in town.
Because they're kind of an anchor restaurant for Loma Linda, or have been for a long time.
To, so there is another restaurant in town that's fairly successful that is looking to buy Angelo's and run both operations.
Okay, well, I'm glad to know that. Good, okay, thank you.
Mr. Jendal? Mr. Jendal?
All right, um, last month I had requested an update for the Tree City. We hadn't started the application.
Yes.
Um, and then the second thing, the school boundary change, um, do we have an update on both those?
Yes. With, with regard to the, uh, the Tree City USA, uh, we will apply for it. We just come up with, they asked a lot, a lot of questions, how many trees we proved, how many trees we, we plant, we planted, how many trees we removed. And, and so we gather all the information, we will, we submit that and apply that this, probably next week. Last year, we, we planted over eighteen hundred trees, just to let you know, in this Loma Linda, eighteen hundred. So there's a lot of trees.
Do we, do we lose anything for all the orange groves that were taken out? I know they were all dead, they were all dead, but did we lose anything for those coming out?
No, no. So, so that's number one. Number two, with regard to school boundary, we, I, I say we, because I point to Barbara, we did contact the, uh, the school district and, uh, from what I understand, they lost information that we gave it to them the first time. So I'm now working directly with the, uh, Redland School District. So I just had a meeting, have a email with them, uh, earlier this week.
You said they lost the information?
Yes.
I contacted them and the lady that I talked to that would have been in charge of that, she indicated that they had no record of receiving the, the, the letter and the resolution. So I've reset that, it's been reassigned to somebody else within their office. I have provided them with information regarding the city boundaries and, um, a whole number of other things. And that that area, yes, is inhabited. It's, it's, it's a long, lengthy process, but they have started on, working on that process.
Who do we provide it to?
The county superintendent of schools. That's where the committee is for the school district boundaries.
Thank you.
It's further complicated by the fact that Colton is in both San Bernardino County and Riverside County, their school district. So it's going to not only involve San Bernardino County, it's going to need to involve Riverside County, so they've got.
I didn't know that.
A lot of, a lot of work ahead of them.
Orthopedic office just down the street, and when they're, it looks finished, when are they supposed to open? Yeah.
There are still months away because they're, they can't get a transformer. That is, all teasing aside.
They can't get a what?
The transformer. And all teasing aside, earlier Jarb's comment, that, parts of that literally are on a ship someplace.
Parked outside of Long Beach?
So they, they are looking at several months before they get a transformer, before they can begin their, their tenant improvements. So it could be six months.
I, I appreciate what you explained, the months, probably years ago. And that is, I have just, I don't know why, in the last month, received multiple complaints about that intersection. And I said, it's only going to get worse, but you can thank the government for it because they've basically designed this, that the, uh, federal government. Because I have multiple people who've said they have near accidents with people exiting or entering the post office. And I can only imagine when you've got people exiting the, that orthopedic office, but there's, our hands are tied, right? It's a done deal.
No, the staff recommended against the project and we overruled them.
We overruled them.
I didn't remember that.
It's true.
I must have been outvoted.
Okay. All right, um, that concludes the city council agenda. Let's move to the housing authority. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on anything, run forward quickly, because if not, we are going to move the consent calendar.
Move it.
Have a first?
Second.
And a second. Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on the housing authority consent calendar. Councilman Jendal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pertempree Daley?
I.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, do we have any reports of officers, reports of members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the housing authority, move into the successor agency. Do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We have, uh, any comments from the public? Not seeing any, we'll move with the consent calendar.
Move it.
First. Do we have a second?
Somebody.
Do we have a second? Oh, yes?
What?
We need a second.
Move a second, move it. Okay, we have a first and a second.
We always languish for a second.
Although I'm not quite certain who made them.
And the motion is to, uh, approve the items on the successor agency consent calendar. Councilman Jendal?
Yes.
Councilman Rigsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pertempree Daley?
I.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes, thank you.
Cool, that adjourns our meetings, thank you.